Okay, welcome to the May 5th, 2000.
He's gonna start you.
Oh, okay. Welcome to the May 5th, 2014 Town Council Meeting. This time, we'll stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Item B, Consent Agenda. Is there anything anybody would like polled on that? Okay, if everything's all set, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as it is?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as it is.
Second.
All in favor? All against? Okay. Item C, News Presentations and Awards. Shelby Wright is not here. Public comments, at this time, anybody that has any comments that's not on the agenda tonight about something else, if they would like to speak. We have Keith Burgoyne from the Hampden Business Association that would like to speak. Keith, go ahead.
Make sure the green light isn't there.
Thank you very much. My name's Keith Burgoyne, 46 Hughes Boulevard here in Hampden. Also, business owner in Hampden and president of the Hampden Business Association. And I'd like to thank the councilors for their time and allowing us to just come here and explain a little bit about this year's Hampden Business Association Dinner, which is scheduled for May 20th, from 5:00 till 8:00 at the Morgan Hill Event Center. This year, we're gonna be honoring Danny and Carla Lafayette, as well as Lafayette Hotels, as our Hampden Business Association Business/Business Person of the Year. We're pretty excited about this year's dinner and awards presentation. We're gonna actually have the Hampden Academy R&amp;B Project Band performing during the social hour, which will be from 5 to 6 o'clock. And also, we'll be having some representatives, I believe from Hampden's Children's Day, to speak to the business community as well during our presentation and the evening's events. Dean Bennett, our own Economic Development Director, will be speaking during the presentation on Hampden and business-friendly, so we're looking forward to that as well, too. For those of you that have attended the HBA Dinner in the past, you're probably accustomed to having us have three students read essays about Hampden and what they would do to bring business to Hampden, et cetera. And from that, we award scholarships to these students accordingly. So this year, our Dinner Committee made a decision to try to make it a little bit more on the technology side. So we asked the students and Mr. Moore at HA, who's incorporating this as a grade, I believe, in his class, to produce video presentations about Hampden, which will, I guess he'll be narrowing those down to the top six. From there, we'll choose the top three, which will be presented at the awards dinner, too. The title is Hampden and What It Means to Me. And from what I've gathered from Mr. Moore at HA, apparently, the students have been going around and they've been filming and putting these four- to six-minute videos together about Hampden. So we look forward to that and presenting those accordingly and awarding the scholarships as well, too. And of course, we'll have our typical sentiment from Augusta for the Lafayette's and presentation of the key to the town, as well as other awards, that evening raffles, et cetera. The, we have been advertising, we've sent out mailers to most businesses that we have addresses for in Hampden. If you haven't received one yet, how you can get ahold of us is, one, you've probably seen the announcement on the marker at Hampden Academy. There is a phone number on there for more information. Two, our Facebook page has my email address, and anybody that wants to email me inquiring about tickets and the evening's events would be great. Also, on the Katatin Trust Company's website, under Katatin Corner, they've been kind enough to put some information in there about the evening's events as well, too. So if you haven't had a chance to send a reservation, et cetera, for a table or some individual tickets, please don't hesitate to look up one of these sources and get ahold of me, and we'd be more than happy to accommodate you accordingly, so. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none. I would like to see if, before we get into public hearings, we have Jim Dunning here from Zero Sort. If we could move that ahead, so we don't tie him up all evening? Any objections or? Okay, so at this time, we'd like to have Jim Dunning come up. He's gonna talk to us about Zero Sort Recycling.
All right. Maybe I'll just hold the microphone. First of all, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to come and talk about our recycling program and the benefits it can have to the town. This program for three years. So it's time for us to look at another opportunity for you. Apparently, this microphone doesn't like me. Oh. All right. Wow. So, here we go. So first of all, my pointer's not working. Technology is just not cooperating tonight, is it? We're gonna go old-school, I'll just use the keypad. I like to start things off by showing this number. It's a million pounds, and it's a staggering number, and that's actually how many pounds of recyclables we handle every day in the state of Maine. A lot of people, when we think of Casella, don't necessarily think about all the good things that we do and the recycling efforts and the sustainability efforts that we have in place. But a million pounds is a significant amount of volume to handle every day here in our state. So what makes us different from everybody else, and what makes this program different, is the fact that it's a single-ben solution. Historically, your recyclables, you've had to keep separate. We've only taken certain numbered plastics. Things couldn't be recycled that once cured, and vice versa. So there was a lot of confusion around the old way of recycling, and it took out a lot of space in your homes and your garages. You know, you had separate bins for different things, so you had to go to the transfer station and put everything, and it's an appropriate place. With our program, it all goes in together, including your glass, which you folks have been paying to recycle in the past. With our program, it goes into the Zero Sort, and there's no cost for it. There's no additional fee for that. So it's an additional savings for the town by getting that material into a different stream. There's over 140 companies in the state that can actually transport material. We're the only one that actually collects it, transports it, sorts it, sells it to mills, and even gives the community an opportunity to buy it back from SCA Tissue in the form of Torx paper towels and tissue paper. So we're pretty unique in that sense, and that's why there's a lot more value in this program than the traditional recycling programs. So Zero Sort accepts all the things that you've been recycling, and then some. With the cardboard, I give a few rules of thumb as to what to follow. With cardboard and paper products, what I tell folks is if you can rip it, it can be recycled. Window envelopes, macaroni boxes with plastic windows in them, things of that sort aren't a problem. Telephone books, magazines, softcover, hardcover books. If you can tear it, it can go into the recycling stream. Glass, we take all the different colored glasses, bottles, jars. You don't have to take lids or labels off, nothing of that sort. Metal, same thing as you've been doing, metal cans, tin cans, that can be recycled. And plastic is a big area where it varies from what you've been doing. Not only do we take number 1 through 7 plastic, anything that has that little chasing triangle on it, we also take what are referred to as semi-rigid plastics, which would be five-gallon buckets, laundry baskets, kids' orange sled from the wintertime with broken handles or a crack on it. As long as it flexes or has some give to it, it can be recycled. So I give a rule of thumb there, if you can bend it, you can recycle it. You buy a lot of things at Home Depot or Best Buy Electronics these days. Everything's in that blister packaging that you have to slice yourself to get into. That type of packaging doesn't have a label on it that says it's recyclable, but it can go into this recycling stream because it's a plastic that has some flex and give to it. So there's a lot more stuff that we do take, some general things that we don't take. The biggest questions we get, Styrofoam still cannot go into the recycling. It can be confusing at times because Styrofoam does have a little triangle on it that says it can be recycled. It can be recycled, but unfortunately, there are very few outlets on the East Coast that are interested in recycling Styrofoam because of the fact that it's very expensive to do so. The other thing I don't accept are stretchy, family-type plastics, which would be your plastic bags, your Saran Wrap, things of that sort. And the reason that we don't take those is because they get caught up in the gears and the machinery that we use to separate all this stuff. It's a very automated process, and when you introduce things of that sort into it, it causes problems, the lines go down, and it's very inefficient for us. What I tell folks you can still do, as you have always done in the past, is you can bring those type of things to Hannaford, Target, Kohl's, just about every major retailer now has an outlet for you to dispose of those at the entrance of their building, and they get recycled. So they can still be recycled, just not in the Zero Sort. One thing that differs with this program is that you don't have to have your recyclables in a loose fashion. You can actually put them in a large, clear, plastic bag, and they will be recycled. Now, it gets a little confusing, because I told you, we don't recycle plastic bags. We don't want the Hannaford bags, we don't want the shopping bags, the Ziploc bags, things of that sort. But for convenience, we allow residents to put their recyclables in a large, clear bag and bring them to the transfer station and deposit them in the container. It's a lot easier to do that than having a bunch of loose material kicking around in the back of your car or in the back of your truck. And that's why we've made that exception with the large, clear bags that you can deliver material in. One of the major components of the program isn't just the fact that we can recycle a lot more stuff and we make it easier for you to do it, it's the fact that we provide a lot of education and support to the program. So one of the things that you'll find is, we'd be doing a postcard mailer, so everybody would get something in the mail that shows exactly what can and cannot be recycled, introducing the program, when it starts, how to participate, as well as, we spend a lot of time working with the schools and going in and teaching our youth about recycling and why it's the best thing to do and why it's the right thing to do, and how to do it. So it's more than just a curbside collection or a transfer station collection program. It's something that we take part in on a personal basis. So how does it compare financially? That's obviously a question. I promise I'm not touching the button. That's a question that we get. And in this case, you folks have had historically a rebate associated with your recycling program, which was about $8,500. And if you look at what the cost of the program is, your recycling program truly costs you money. It's not that it was saving money, it's that if you look at what we would be doing, delivering your material to Hancock, it would cost you about $10,000 a year to have a recycling program. With the Zero Sort program, because of the fact that our location is closer than Hancock and the fact that we get a lot more material out of your waste stream, it actually is a savings to the community, so it's a negative $5,000. The difference between the traditional sorted recycling and this program amounts to roughly $15,000 to the good. So not only are you able to pull more out of the waste stream and be more sustainable from an environmental perspective, it's much more economically sustainable as well. So there's an added benefit there for the community. Another thing that has come up frequently historically, if you've followed the recycling trends and you've followed some of the news associated with it, there's been concerns about the commitments that communities have to the PERC incinerator plant. And it was a very legitimate concern, because there was a time where communities were penalized for under-delivering material to the incinerator, and it was an obstacle. A lot of folks didn't want to do the right thing and recycle, and then turn around and get a fine for doing so. One of the things that we incorporate into this program is a GAT relief component, which has been worked out with both PERC and the MRC, which allows us to fulfill those obligations for you. So there's no risk of the community being penalized for doing the right thing and increasing your volumes with a recycling program such as this. So it's just another way that we're trying to remove any obstacles to doing the right thing and helping our local communities recycle more and more every day. So with that said, that's the brief version of the presentation. I'll turn it over to you folks to ask me any questions that you have.
Does anybody in the public have any comments for Jim?
Go ahead. We are hauling companies based in Herman, so our transportation group's over in Freedom Industrial Park. That's where my office is. The material right now, when we collect it, we consolidate it up in Old Town at the municipal transfer station, the City of Old Town's transfer station. From there, it goes to our facility right outside of Boston. And this October, we have a facility in Lewiston that will be coming online, so it's gonna be sorted right at our facility down in Lewiston. Other questions? There must be more than that. Yes, sir.
Has the shorter distance between Lewiston and Boston factored into the proposed cost?
Yes, yes, it is factored in there. That site should be online in October. Even if it didn't come online in October, we've committed to this pricing model, so it's not like we'd say, hey, it's taking longer than we thought, it's gonna cost you folks more money. It's been factored in and committed to in that proposal.
So do you know that the big, clear trash bags, you know, most of them come white?
The, we don't take white bags. The reason why we take the recyclables in large, clear bags is because we can easily identify it as recyclable material. If it's in a white bag or a black bag, we have to actually pull that bag aside and break it open to make sure it's recyclables before it hits the line. The clear bags, what I recommend people do is, you can get them at Hannaford. They're the smaller, you know, tall kitchen bag size. But Home Depot and Sam's Club have 55-gallon drumliners that are clear, and they work great, because you can stuff that thing right full, and your recyclables are typically a lot lighter than your trash. So you can stuff a 55-gallon bag right full of recyclables, toss it in your trunk. They're not gonna bounce all over the place, and it's easy when you get to the transfer station. You just toss them into the machine. There are gonna be some changes at the transfer station to make it easier for you folks, and we're actually gonna be looking at a compactor unit so that all the material goes in, gets compacted, keeps your transportation costs down, saves you folks more money there.
I understand that you were talking about the savings for the town.
Yes.
Projected out for five years, saying, I mean, it's great, it's gonna save us money this year or maybe next year.
Mm-hmm. It's gonna save you even more in the...
That's what I'm wondering, what are you predicting?
Yep, what's, exactly. 2018 is a big year for the local communities because of the expiration of the Bangor Hydro Subsidy at the PERC plant. So the incinerator tipping fees are going to be escalating over the next few years, and it's a little bit unknown right now in 2018 exactly what it's gonna go to. There's talk that it's gonna be twice what it is right now. Is it gonna be that much? I'm not sure. Hopefully not, for your sake and for my sake. I live in Orno, and we share the same pain. But what's gonna, what I can guarantee you is that over the next few years, as those tipping fees increase and go up and up, the more you can pull out of your waste stream today and divert into the recycling program, the more you're gonna save. So it's better tomorrow than it is today.
Can you elaborate on how many surrounding communities are already...
Sure. Bangor's coming online July 1st. They were really the last big community to take the plunge. We started with Brewer three years ago. We've got Brewer, well, actually, I'll start up in Orno where I live. So we've got Orno, Old Town, Milford, Vezey. Bangor, July 1st. We've got Brewer, Orington, Holden, Herman. Now you guys, hopefully. And then, outside of the greater Bangor area, we have Islesborough, which is a pretty remote community. We hop on a ferry and go over there and grab their recyclables, and they're saving thousands of dollars a year, even paying us to ride the ferry over with our trucks. We've got Abbott, which is a very rural community, so it's a bit of an example to show that, hey, we can do it in Bangor and Brewer. We can do it in Abbott, we can do it in Boston. It works just about in every community in one way or another, but it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. Every community has a little bit different program. A lot of them have curbside collection, a lot of them have transfer stations. So it's all dependent on the community and what their investment level is.
Do you, is this pretty, is this like a pretty new technology?
New for us in this part of the country. Single-stream recycling, historically. Started out in California, and most things kinda worked their way to us, and then they hit Portland, and then they worked their way north. You know, the southern part of the state's been doing this longer. We've been doing it for about three years up here, southern Maine. You know, five, six years, we've been doing programs like this. But as you reach out beyond New England, it's not a new technology in that sense. But what has evolved and what has changed is the amount of different materials that can go into the program. We use optical sorters that actually have a light refraction technology, so we can identify what type of plastic is on the conveyor line. And depending on how the light bounces back, an airjet bounces the plastic this way or that way. There's a video clip, I didn't play it tonight, but it's a quick video clip, zerosort.com, and you can actually see the sorting process and all the mechanics that go into it. So it is continually changing. I often think of the televisions, you know, 10 years ago, TV didn't hang on a wall like it does today. It's amazing how technology changes so fast, and a lot of things change in the recycling industry as well, because it's very technologically driven. What other questions do we have?
How do you educate the consumer on what plastics you're looking for? You did it today, but how do we have to present them?
Uh, what, couple elements to that. One of them would be the mailer. That's an important piece. I'm sure you guys are gonna have information at the transfer station. I have brochures that you guys can take tonight, but there'll be information at the transfer station, signage. And as more and more communities are doing this, we're finding that it's becoming more and more commonplace. So it's something that, you know, there's no perfect way to educate everybody, but the more and more that folks are participating, talking to their friends, neighbors, they're at the transfer station, taking care of their recyclables, word of mouth is a big piece of it. But the mailers are certainly a big component of that as well. And we do a lot of different things. You know, Bangor, right now, has a campaign that is gonna be launching where there's gonna be things going out in the weekly. So you guys are gonna have a little bit of additional benefit from what Bangor's doing for education and outreach on their program, because it's the same program. So it's just a compliment to what they're doing. Other questions?
Any questions from the councils? Comments? Okay, Jim, thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So at this time, we had a recommendation from the Infrastructure Committee to go Zero Sort Recycling. Starting July 1st. Do I have a motion or discussion?
I make a motion that we move to Zero Sort Recycling at the transfer station, starting July 1st.
No, second that.
Discussion?
Any public?
Well, we've had comments, but does the public have any comments they'd like to add on this? Seeing none. Discussion from the council? All in favor? All opposed? Good. Okay, so going back to public hearings. One A, Application for LICA License Received from Anglers, Colby Road. Public hearing is officially open. Do we have a motion to accept it? Is there anybody from the public that's opposed or against this? Seeing none. Is there a mo... Public hearing is closed. What do we wanna do?
Move approval of LICA license for Anglers Restaurant.
Discussion? All in favor? All against?
This item needs signatures. I'm gonna send it this way to end up at Denise.
Item 1B, Application for LICA License Received from Kimble McGlaughlin. McGlaughlin's at the Marina. Is there anybody in the public that has anything for or against? Seeing none. Public hearing's closed. Yeah. Do we have a motion to accept it?
Move acceptance of approval of LICA license for McGlaughlin's at the Marina.
Second.
All in discussion? All in favor? All against? Public hearing, 1C, Amendment to Town Council Compensation Ordinance. Public hearing is open. Anybody in the public have anything against or for?
Terry McAvoy, 59 Monroe Road. I'm all in favor of the Town Council discontinuing the stipend to the Town Council and, as well as the Internet stipend. I think it would be a very acceptable gesture on the part of the council to show that they're willing to sacrifice, if you will, when other departments may be asked to do so. So I would appreciate a yes vote on it, thank you, if it's voted on tonight. Thank you.
Lisa Kelly, 19 Clark Circle. I was just wondering if you could give a brief overture of what this agenda segment is about specifically? And if you could give us specific details about what would be given up, so to speak? Thank you.
The council's Finance and Administration Committee, I believe, is the one who started, who talked about this initially. But the discussion was, as part of preparing for this year's budget, things that could be considered in order to save money. And one of them raised was the idea of the councilors not receiving the $30 per meeting, or the mayor, the $35 per meeting that they receive, and that they also not receive the 50, up to $50 a month that they get for, to subsidize the cost of having an Internet connection at their home. And that, in order to make this type of change, it requires an ordinance. And that ordinance, this public hearing tonight, is for that ordinance. The impact budget-wise of this is approximately $23,000. The wages line item was $18,000, and the Internet for seven times 12 was up to $4,200. And that would be, if this was successful, removed from the budget as, that you'd, that people would see as part of what's gone out. And the purpose of this public hearing is to determine whether or not there is public support or not for that measure.
Is there any more public comment? Okay, public hearing closed. Amendment to the Town Council compensation ordinance. Do we have any discussion or thoughts?
Is there a motion?
No. We're waiting for a motion.
We need a motion before you have discussion, don't you? No?
I don't think there is one. Need something to talk about, that would be the motion, yeah.
Yeah, you need a motion before you can discuss it.
I don't think there is one.
Well.
Okay, so we figure we're gonna just table it? Don't wanna talk about it?
I would, I would make a motion that we, um, I don't know what the wording would be. Approve. Approve, um, the, uh, amendment, uh, to the Town Council compensation ordinance.
Discussion?
I'd like to, um, split it into two items. I think when, um, the internet started to be paid for, I know when I first started serving on the council, a policeman came to my door with a packet of copied material, which was sometimes this thick, um, and when we went to getting internet paid for, people were, given if they didn't have one, um, a laptop to use, and the justification was that if you added up the money, you know, it, it saved money and it made sense. Well, now we're in a time where pretty much everybody has internet access at home, and it isn't something, um, that if you want people to get, um, the materials online, you have to subsidize, so I'd like to treat that, um, internet subsidy as a separate item, and then talk about the stipend.
I don't know if there's any support for that.
The ordinance only deals with the, the compensation.
Oh, it doesn't deal with the-
Right, no, because we-
Okay.
Then we need to amend the motion, since the motion did include internet when it was made.
No, it didn't.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, item 2, nominations, appointments, and elections, warrants for special municipal election. Denise?
This is the warrant for the, uh, special election to be held in conjunction with the State of Maine primary election on June 10th. This is a one-item, um, referendum question for the charter amendment that deals with, um, realigning the four council districts in the town. Um, the council held a public hearing on this and, uh, adopted the ordinance and sent it for election on June 10th, and this is the warrant that needs to be posted throughout the town, um, calling that election, and, uh, within the warrant is the description of the new boundaries, and there's also information posted on our website regarding this. So, um, the warrant needs to be, uh, approved and signed by the council before we can post it.
Do we have any public comment? Seeing none. We have a motion.
I make a motion that we, um, go out for vote for the proposed amendment to the Town Charter, um, that would, uh, set up the new districts. Is that a good motion?
No.
Approve and sign the warrant.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Seeing none. 2B, notice of state primary election. Denise?
This is informational only, um, the council doesn't need to sign this one, but I included it in the packet so that, um, the residents would know that, um, the primary election is taking place on June 10th, and the offices to be voted on are United States Senator, Governor, Representative to Congress District 2, State Senator District 10, State Representative District 101, and some county offices are Judge of Probate, County Treasurer, Register of Deeds, Sheriff, and District Attorney, um, and in order to vote in a primary election, um, you need to be enrolled in one of the major parties, the Democratic, the Republican, or the Green Independent. Uh, I also wanted to let folks know that unenrolled voters can enroll in a party if they wish to participate in the primary up to and including on Election Day, and we will have the register of voters at the polls on Election Day. If you are currently enrolled in a party and you wish to change parties, that must be done 15 days before the election, and I don't have a calendar in front of me, I believe it's May 23rd, I think, but that information also is available on our website, so this is just information only.
Thank you. Public comment? Seeing none. Do I have a motion? Don't need it. Okay. Moving right along. Unfinished business, 3A, Route 1A Sewer Project bid and award, recommendations of infrastructure and finance and administration. It was, uh, recommended by Infrastructure, we didn't have a finance meeting tonight, but it came in under the budget, and I believe it is gonna be awarded to T-Buck Construction for $811,124. That's the sewer project that starts from Route 9 on 1A and goes to the Water District, replacing the old sewer lines.
Two pump stations.
Yeah, and rebuilding the two pump stations. Are any public comments?
Beverly Woodcock, 110 Main Road North, um, I've been a resident of Hamden for 29 years and served on the planning board for 15, and I have several concerns regarding the proposed sewer project on Route 1A. I'm sure that everyone recalls that this stretch of the road was under construction all of last summer and into the fall. The noise and the dust and the traffic delays were a huge inconvenience for the entire town, but were particularly burdensome to the residents of this residential district. To be faced with another summer of construction is simply unfair and is poor planning by the town and an unnecessary expense to the town. We have been told that this is a mere, we've been told of this project a mere four weeks before the start of the project. My second concern is in regard to the extent to which the roadway is to be widened to accommodate the Department of Transportation. The town is proposing to destroy over a dozen of, uh, very large hemlock trees, among others, that we planted at considerable expense over 25 years ago. Destroying the trees would impact our property value and our privacy and would come at a considerable cost to the town for our remuneration. And how long before this section of Route 1A will be reconstructed by the state? Will it be 10 years from now, 15 years from now? We all know the sorry state of Maine's roads and finances, and many other areas are in much worse, uh, repair. I'm here to respectfully request that the town investigate alternatives to this current proposal. Uh, perhaps a, a new pipe could be installed in the old line, something that has been done here in the past. I don't want to lose my trees and my privacy and have the town pay for them and then wait a decade or more for the state to come yet again and tear up this road all over again. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, public comments closed. Do I have a motion?
I, I was, oh, we can't discuss until we have a motion.
I'd make a motion that we award the, uh, 1A Sewer Project bid to T-Buck Construction.
Discussion?
I wonder if there's anyone who can speak to the need, what's driving this investment?
What's driving this investment is that that section of sewer line is one of the worst that we have in terms of root infiltration and problems that we've seen. The area around Coffee Bake Break Bakery, say that three times fast, as you go down by Lafayette, et cetera, um, have had problems in the past. It's one of the older sewer lines. We are required by the Department of Environmental Protection to prevent infiltration in the sewer system, and to meet those goals, we have to do pipe replacements on occasion. We've done a number of projects over the past 15 years, 14 years that I've been here, and they did prior to, but it's a very expensive process, so you tend not to do them until you start to pay down your next debt, and we paid down a sewer debt last year, it was the last year of it, so assuming a new sewer debt will have less of an impact on the sewer users than had we done it some time ago. The two pump stations that need to be rebuilt contain technology that we can no longer get parts for in order to repair them, and pump stations are not something anyone wants to fail, because it's not just one issue, it's a whole host of issues that will go beyond this. This project was, um, identified and discussed last year and went to the voters for approval in November of this past year, and, and was approved. The, um, it is indeed unfortunate, we had talked initially about doing our project at the same time the Water District did theirs, but the Water District went a year ahead of where we were able to in terms of, um, the permitting and the, the ordinance development and the, the approval process from the citizens in order to proceed with this. We have to go through a very formalized process that, where the, the voters get to vote on whether we can do it, and the Water District doesn't have to do that, so they moved ahead more quickly, and we were constrained by process not to be able to do it at that time. I agree that it will be an, a major inconvenience for people while this is going on. The good thing is that it's not all the way to Bangor, the bad thing is that it's in the front of the same homes that it was in last summer, and I, I'm, the other problem with some of, is the location of the sewer line itself is under these trees that you're discussing, or, or portions of it are, so if you don't, if we just simply take the line, we'll kill the tree anyway, and that's not the best management practice either. Um, I, I know that our Public Works Director and engineers have been looking at this, but we don't have an alternative at this time, and certainly not one that, the budget for this entire project, it is $902,500. That was the, the approval. We have a contract for the work for 811, there were some engineering costs that went along with it, but we should be well under the 902,000, which means we, we borrow less in order to complete it. That's an explanation of the project, why we need it and-
And why it needs to be done.
And why it needs to be done. It, it's not necessarily widened, that's where the sewer line is, it's not, you have to get to it to take it up.
Any other discussion? Questions?
All those in favor? Hold on. Item 3B, room sewer bond documents for Room 1A Sewer Project.
Have the town manager explain that.
The town applied to the Maiden Bond Bank for a bond issue, uh, for the replacement of the sewer line on Route 1A, and was authorized through this borrowing by the, um, referendum question that passed last November. Um, the documents related to that spell out the terms and conditions, um, it's my understanding that the, um, final interest rate, when it's all worked out, is a little over 3%, which is a very good rate for borrowing. Um, the money, these documents, um, once approved, get forwarded to New York to the bond location, and then, um, our money should be available after that for the construction of this project.
Any public comment?
What's the payback time period?
25 years. No, I'm sorry, 20 years. 2015 through 2034.
Any other comments? Questions? Seeing none, public comments closed. Do I have a motion to approve the sewer bond documents?
I make a motion that we approve the sewer bond documents.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Varian?
Now, uh, just for, uh, general information for the public, the, the revenue that is necessary to pay off the principal interest on these bonds are generated through-
Sewer user fees.
Not through our general taxation budget.
No.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None?
I, I have it. About 17 things that need signatures, but I, but for the council, there's just this one, I'll start that back.
Item 3C, proposed amendment to the Town Charter, Section 1003 Charter Amendments, introduction for public hearing.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce this item for public hearing, all that's required is that a counselor, um, introduce it. Uh, the purpose of this amendment is we have significant, uh, variances between what the Town Charter requires for the process of, um, making amendments to the Town Charter and what is permitted under regulations that have changed at the state level in terms of home rule and authorization to change a charter, and the purpose of this, these modifications are to bring them into alignment with each other.
Public comment? Seeing none. We don't have to vote on it, right? Okay. Item 3D, codification of charter and ordinances, Finance Committee recommendation. Do we have anybody from Finance? That'd be you.
I guess that'd be me. Um, the Finance Committee discussed, um, the charter requirement that says that the town will have its ordinances codified, meaning that all the ordinances for the town will be in one organized format, um, and not like you see now on the town's website, which is a whole laundry list of different items. It would become the municipal code for the town of Hamden and include all ordinances that the town has. The codification process also includes a review of those ordinances between, between ordinances to make sure that definitions and those kind of things are consistent across ordinances, so that we don't have a definition, as we have found in the past, of resident in one ordinance meaning one thing and resident in another-
ordinance meeting one thing and resident in another ordinance meeting a different thing. And the codification process also reviews all of your ordinances for consistency and compliance with state statute, which it goes, an organization, this is for, this particular proposal is from General Code, takes all of the town's ordinances, reviews them in that area, and then provides the town with a book of all of the inconsistencies in your codes, between definitions, between, that aren't consistent with state law, et cetera. All of those are identified by ordinance to the town council, who then has to go through the process of making decisions on every single one of those inconsistencies. It may require ordinance amendment, it may require, and ordinance amendment generally are a public hearing kind of process. It would be a very major undertaking and take probably six months to nine months to get through this, identify, find all the things and see what's wrong with them. The end result is, after those corrections are made and provided back to the company, a municipal code is established that includes all of the town's ordinances in one code that's also, it's in a book and it's also available online. And that, that process then would need to be updated at some point on an annual or semi-annual or, the charter requires that the ordinances be codified within three years of the development of the charter and then every 10 years. I found in 1987 that the town codified its ordinances, but what that meant is it put the zoning ordinance and the subdivision in a code and nothing else. And so it was never completed, it's not current, and it's, to be perfectly honest, I didn't know it existed until I was told that it, in years prior to 19, to 2000, that it had been, but it was 1987. The council has the decision of either going through the process of removing the provision from the charter that says you'll codify your ordinances, or you'll do it. That's what's been brought forward. It has not been done consistently. The Finance and Administration Committee's recommendation is to do this and to use monies from reserve, not monies from general taxation, but monies from reserves that were set aside in, reserves that have been dormant for a number of years that contain approximately $15,000. The cost of codification, the project is, the proposal is $14,900, and on an annual basis, the cost of maintaining the electronic version is $1,195. And any changes you make, depending on when you make them, the code would need to be updated, and that could run between $2,000 and $3,000 in a year. I told this company that we did about 10 ordinance changes a year, ordinances, and that would be run between $2,000 and $3,000 to update. However, at the end of the day, what you have is a municipal code that is compliant and that we're not finding out later on that some ordinance isn't consistent with another ordinance, because ordinances are done all the time. We, you know, there are ordinances here dating back to, when we, we found this when we looked at the ordinance for all the different parks. There were many components of some of those ordinances that are not consistent with state law. They may have been when they were first developed, but they hadn't been used in a very long time, and so they were not consistent. We've since updated some of those. But anyway, the Finance Committee's recommendation is to move forward with this codification project and stay in compliance with it, or get in compliance with the town charter.
Rich Armstrong, 109 Kennebec Road. Just a couple of questions. Has the town ever got into trouble with the non-codification of the ordinances monetarily?
You mean, have we been sued or anything along those lines?
Right.
No. No, the problem that we've run into, the most current example is when someone was going to solicit petitions for a charter change and were provided information from the current charter, which identified how many registered voters you needed signatures for and who could collect them. And when the town attorney reviewed this for inclusion on our agenda, he discovered that the, the state law regarding charter amendments is not the same for, for the purpose of petition gathering and those kind of things, is not the same as it is for anyone who's gathering, doing a petition for a state office or for anything else. And that the signature requirement is higher. And not only is it higher, only people who are residents of the community can do the collection, which means we provided people with incorrect information based on what was in our charter that, because state law had changed in regard to what that was. Now, that, that's an example of what might not have occurred if they had been codified so that they reviewed the whole thing to make sure everything was consistent. The Dorothea Dix Park, when we did the, can't remember the name of it, but it caused controversy, outdoor facilities, blah, 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 it was our parks, what you can do in parks, et cetera. We had ordinances on the books that said that limited the carry of weapons. And that's, may have been legal for communities to do at one time, perhaps, when these ordinances were developed, but it's certainly not, it's not legal now, and that was discovered as part of this process. Those are the kind of things, it's not, should anyone challenge your ordinances, if there's something in there that's not consistent, they would have a better chance. Has anyone done that to us in my 15 years, 14 years here?
So how many towns in the state of Maine have been codified? What percentage of?
Well, the, the, I have the list of the ones that this company has done, which is from some small communities to some large community, there are 15 on their list. There's, Municipal Code is the other one that works in Maine. They do Orano and some other towns. Bangor Brewer, Bar Harbor, the Elsworth City of Belfast, the list is in the proposal for who does it, but there are 15 there, and I'm not sure how many Municipal Code do in terms of, that's a company name as well, Municipal Code does for this. But, but there are 452 communities in Maine. Now, how many of them have, not all of them have zoning ordinances, not all of them have, you know, depending on the degree or number of things you're trying to keep track of. I guess that's the best way to phrase it.
So to be clear, there's going to be an upfront fee of roughly $14,000 to go through all of our ordinances and make sure that they comply with state and federal guidelines?
State law, federal and each other.
Mm-hmm. So that's to go through all of our ordinances, and then each year if we change half a dozen of them, they're going to charge us $2,000 or $3,000 more to do a few?
No, 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 no. The only, the, the fee, some communities update every two years. Orano, I think, is doing every two years.
Got it.
Because what happens is if you add an ordinance or you amend an ordinance, it needs to be reflected in your municipal code, needs to be changed. And that, the process of changing that and putting, inserting it in, making sure it's, it fits, is, he said for 10 of those a year, would be between $2,000 and $3,000. That is the, that, but the, you don't have to do that. If the town chose to maintain the online version, that's $1,195 a year.
It just seems to me that if they're going to go through the whole ordinance, which is, that's a lot of work.
Hmm.
It's a lot of work. And then if you're going to go through 10, and we're going to tell you what they are, because right now they have to discover them. If we change them after the initial cleansing and we say, here's the 10 that we've changed, that seems pretty steep. It just seems like, you know, steep. I know, I know it has nothing to do with you guys, it just seems like, to me, I'm telling you, this is where, this is what we've changed, and this is what you need to do. It seems a little steep, but, so, thank you for clarifying.
Could I, could I say something, Rich? When this came about, I was not in favor of it. I thought this was probably money that was not going to be spent well. But after some research was done and, and the city manager got back to us, we have a tendency in government to always be reactive to everything, and this gives us an opportunity to be proactive and for, for once, we'll have our ducks all in a line so that when someone comes in, we can present something reasonable to them and we can look and see what's done before we get into trouble. And so I'm, I'm very much in favor of it.
Any more questions? Seeing none. Public comment? Do I have a motion? Make a motion that we authorize codification of our ordinances and charter.
Second.
Are you seeking to accept the proposal from General Code?
Yes.
That would require a set aside of the bid process and a...
Okay, we can get to that.
Okay.
Let's do the codification first.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right. Any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, then I'd make a motion that we set aside the bid process so that we can go with a company named?
General Code.
General Code.
I would second that.
Public comment, any? Seeing none. Discussion, Jean?
So you said that there was another company that did this? Is there a reason we would prefer one over the other and not give an opportunity to both of them to make a proposal?
In looking over the product and the, what they do in terms of review, this, this company has a little bit more in terms of its review process that I think is badly needed at this point with the volume of ordinances that we have.
I wasn't at that Finance Committee meeting, so I'm not as informed as others are. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? And at this time, we'll take a five-minute recess.